Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 4th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Carroll?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Salazar, the roll call, please.
Yes, Chairman. All Commissioners are present tonight.
Very good. Commissioners, we have in the agenda the next item, the minutes from our August 21st meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? And if not, could we hear a motion to approve then? Commissioner Carroll?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Commissioner Jackal?
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve the minutes from August 21st. Please cast your vote. And the minutes are passed unanimously by the Commission. Very good. Any agenda changes, Ms. Chow?
Good evening, Chairman Rossler. No changes tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is oral communication. This is a time that the Commission sets aside for members of the public to address us on items that are not on the agenda. I do not have any speaker slips, and if you want to testify before the Commission, we need you to fill out a speaker slip, and they're available in the hallway. Seeing no one, we will then move on to our first public hearing. Under our public hearings, staff will make a presentation. The Commission will ask questions about what's been presented, if we have any. Then we will open it up to the public for testimony. Right now, I just have one member of the public that wants to address us. And then we will close the public hearing, have discussion amongst the Commissioners, ask questions of both staff and the applicant, and then we will make our decision. And that's how our process works. So, the first item on our agenda is the first public hearing is the Downtown Specific Plan Amendment. Mr. Connolly, your staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This is an item that we initially started discussing in February of this year. We're bringing back the action for formal amendment this evening. So, the specific plan area for the Downtown Specific Plan covers about 284 acres. It includes the South Santa Fe area and the areas along Vista Village that are shown here on the map. There are six different planning districts. The discussion that we initiated in February focused on the residential neighborhoods that are kind of on the periphery of the map, and those are in the Transit, which is the red, the West Gateway, which is the beige on the west side there, and the Paseo-Santa Fe District, which is the yellow. So, the Transit Area East is the area shown in black here that's just east of Santa Fe and north of Vista Village Drive. Transit Area West is north of Vista Village Drive and west of Santa Fe. This is Getting Way, Camino Patricia, Camino Corto, and Terracina. West Gateway is a small area that's located off of Plymouth Drive. And Paseo-Santa Fe, Palo Vista, is the area off of Palo Vista, just south of Rincon Street. So, I'll cover each of these kind of with an aerial photo to show the areas here. This is the east area, north of Vista Village and east of North Santa Fe. It includes a lifeline property where the city owns between Michigan and Indiana, primarily one- and two-story homes, a mix of single-family and multifamily with partially improved streets. This is some photos of the area. It's one of the more improved of the residential districts within the plan in terms of street improvements. There are sidewalks and portions of the district and curb and gutter, and some vacant lots, which you can see up in the upper right-hand corner. The Transit District West is west of Santa Fe and the Transit Center, north of Vista Village, portions of Camino Patricia and Camino Corto, Terracina Street and Getting Way, one- and two-story homes, a mix of single and multifamily. We've seen a couple of early design review projects in this area, largely unimproved streets. Some photos of this area to show the character of the residential neighborhood. The West Gateway Plymouth is a small area behind the Commercial Center off of Plymouth, north of Vista Village, again, one- and two-story homes, mostly single-family here with unimproved streets. This is the frontage, again, unimproved. And finally, Paseo-Santa Fe Palo Vista Neighborhood. This is the area that's both east and west of Palo Vista Drive, south of Rincon and Santa Fe, one- and two-story homes, again, a mix of single and multifamily, which Palo Vista and Rincon are primarily unimproved streets. Let me show the area here. So, the current standards in these areas per the specific plan are mixed-use, so commercial or residential, or both. The maximum density is 40 units to the acre, and the maximum building height is 60 feet. So, we had some early design review projects at the beginning of the year. The Commission expressed some concern about their height and density within the residential neighborhoods. So, we came back to the Commission and talked in February. We had a discussion. The direction we got from the Commission was to change, make some changes within these areas, within the east district, to change the designation for land uses to residential only, maintain the 40 units per acre density, and reduce the building heights to 45 feet. In the Transit District West, it was residential only along Camino Patricia, reduce the maximum density to 21 units per acre, bring the building height down to 35 feet within those residential-only areas, and reduce the building height to 45 feet in the remainder of that zone. Within the West Gateway was to change to residential only, reduce the density to 21 units to the acre and the building height to 35 feet. And within Paseo-Santa Fe Palo Vista was to change the designation to residential only west of Palo Vista Drive and north of Rincon, and reduce the density and building heights accordingly in that area, but maintain the mixed-use standards in the remainder of the district. The Commission also asked staff to review the parking standards within the plan and come back with any recommendations for multifamily development. The City Council then reviewed the same issues in later February of this year and gave us final direction, which is summarized in the staff recommendation, primarily consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendations to change a lot of the mixed-use zoning to residential only, reduce densities to 30 units per acre rather than 21 to be consistent with other changes in the plan, and reduce building heights to 45 feet. And those changes are made within those two districts, as well as the West Gateway, where the density was reduced to 30, and maximum building height was 35. And in Paseo-Santa Fe Palo Vista, the same thing, 30 dwelling units per acre and 45 feet maximum. So, to sum it all up, the specific plan amendment that's before you this evening for final review is to make residential-only land use category designations applied to certain areas, which are added via a map. That's Figure 2-2 in your packet, which I'll cover. Revised density designations, which are also included in a new map that range between 30 to 40 dwelling units per acre, and revised building heights, which are also included in a new map, all of which are included in your packet, and those range from 35 to 45 up to 60 feet. Staff's also recommending to include an allowance for up to 25 percent compact parking spaces in any new development. Compact would be eight by 16. Our current standards are nine by 19 for a typical parking space. That would only be allowed for a quarter of the required spaces in the project. And then there's a clarification that utility undergrounding is required for new development because it's not clearly spelled out in the specific plan, but it is a requirement citywide. The maps are shown here. This is the revised land use map. You can note that there's a residential multifamily category added. That's the orange. And there's some neighborhoods here in the east gateway, I'm sorry, the east transit, which include this area and this area were changed to residential only. The west gateway area was changed to residential only, and this portion of Paseo-Santa Fe. Otherwise, the map remains the same. With respect to the density map, again, this is a new map that clarifies what was previously in a table in the specific plan, and now because of the varying densities of some of these areas is shown graphically. So, it's at the parcel level, and you can note that the 30 dwelling units per acre changes were made to those same residential-only categories that identified before, as well as the entire south gateway planning area that's down in South Santa Fe area is all limited to 30 dwelling units per acre. And then there's a building heights, which is the final new map. Again, this was shown in a table in the plan, and now shows categories for 35, which is this small area over in the west gateway, and the area around the circle that's around the church here over off of Eucalyptus and those areas south of that, that was adopted when the specific plan was last updated in 2015, and a 45-foot height limit throughout the historic downtown area, and the west Transit District area, and the entire south gateway district. There is one omission on this plan, which I just noticed tonight, and that's the 100 Main Street property right here, which should be 60 feet. So, I'm going to make that change, since we approved a 60-foot development on that So, that sums up the staff's changes that are proposed tonight. These follow the City Council's direction that we received on February 27th of this year. Again, the intent was to improve compatibility with new development in existing residential neighborhoods. The changes that are proposed are covered by the prior program EIR addendum that was adopted in 2015, because the proposal tonight reduces the overall development potential within the specific plan. It conforms with the general plan land use policies, which is addressed in the staff report, consistent with government code requirements. And since the Planning Commission is advisory to the City Council, your recommendation tonight will be forwarded to the City Council for final action following the action you take this evening. So, that completes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Connolly, I agree with all of the areas, but I have some concern and confusion on the Transit District West. I come and go a lot through all of, and so I'm one of those who cuts through Goading to Camino Patricia to get into the theater. So, we're changing, the Planning Commission, if I read this correctly, back in February, we said 21 units per acre, and the City Council is saying in that area to increase it to 40 units per acre?
It's at 40 now. The City Council did not recommend changing it to reduce it to 21.
We know why? Is it just so there's consistency in the area?
There was some discussion the night of the City Council discussion on the 27th, and there was at least one property owner from that area that requested that they maintain the mixed-use designation and the higher density. The Council also felt that because those properties off of Getting and Terracina were close to the Transit Center, that it still presented some opportunities for mixed-use at higher densities.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Garrison?
Yes, Mr. Connolly. Within these specific areas, you can do parks and recreation, correct?
Yes.
You can do medical facilities?
Yes.
Alcohol?
With the use permit.
And retail?
Yes.
How about marijuana?
No.
Because marijuana is not legal. What if it passes with Prop, what is it, Z? Would you be able to put medical marijuana storefronts in this entire area? Because I believe it says it can be in mixed-use zones.
This is the Citizens Initiative you're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
It's my recollection that it would allow for marijuana uses within the mixed-use zone. There would be certain separation requirements from uses, like schools, for instance, which I think are at least 500 feet, maybe more. And so, there would be certain areas within the mixed-use zone where the uses could not locate, should the initiative pass, because of the separation. But then there would be presumably, in some parts of the mixed-use zone, locations where it could be permitted.
For instance, the traffic circle, that's a mixed-use zone. That building that has nobody on the first floor, marijuana storefronts could go in there?
If the proposition passes?
If the proposition passes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. I, too, I'm kind of distraught by Transit District West. So, what we ended up with then is 40 dwelling units per acre.
Yes.
I desperately wish there were a way to go back to at least 30, if not 21. These are very narrow, dense streets. I can't imagine that kind of density.
So, the Planning Commission has asked to make a recommendation to the Council tonight? You can make that in whatever form you'd like. If that's something you'd like to include, then that can certainly be included in the staff report to the Council.
Okay. Now, so is this now mixed-use residential? Again, this is Transit District West. Mixed-use residential or multifamily?
It's mixed-use. You can see in the map here, it's all pink, which is all mixed-use.
If it's 100 percent residential, are we hewing to the residential parking standards?
The residential parking standards in the Downtown Specific Plan would be required, not the citywide parking standards.
And what is that standard for the Downtown Specific Plan?
It's less than what the citywide standards are. It's based on the number of bedrooms. I believe it's 1.25 for a one-bedroom, 2.25 for a two-bedroom, 2.75 for a three-bedroom. If I'm not mistaken, that includes guest parking.
Well, I think we're creating a disaster, but thank you.
Commissioner, or Mr. Connolly, in Transit District, the West Gateway, Palmar Plymouth area, how did they decide on 30 dwelling units per acre? Is there some discussion around that as opposed to 21?
Yeah, I believe it was just to be consistent with the other reduced density throughout the plan, so that there was a consistency. It's 30 dwelling units per acre in South Gateway. So, I think they felt their dwelling units per acre would be consistent lower density with the remainder of the plan.
Okay. Very good. Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, Mr. Connolly. If the parking regulations were to be changed, and a certain percentage were compact, how is that administered? I mean, do you designate, "These are compact parking spots, and these are not"? How's that normally?
It would be administered through the site plan approval process, exactly as you see all the development come through. So, unless it were an administrative approval, it would come to the Planning Commission or the Council, and it would be designated on the site plan and conditioned.
All right. Thank you.
Would the spaces be designated physically out at the project?
Yes.
Would they be identified as compact?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Very good. Any other questions? All right. We do have, this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing, and the first speaker is Lev Gershman. Did I get that right?
Good evening, Commissioners, staff. My name is Lev Gershman. I'm the managing partner of Tideline Partners. We're a real estate development and management firm. We, until recently, had our office located in downtown Vista. I currently live at 5363 Bragg Street in San Diego. But I want to make a couple of brief comments about the specific plan update. I support all of the changes that are being made, downzoning in some of the areas to fit within the surrounding context. I think that makes sense. And our firm is really excited about the vision of the community plan. We think this is tremendous potential for economic and community development. My one comment would be towards the parking, compact spaces, and we've come to realize this constraint through working on a project that we'll be speaking with you about later. And the challenge is that even if all of these areas are 40 dwelling units per acre, you've noticed that there has not been a lot of development happening in the downtown. And in big part, the challenge is the lots are small, and the constraints, the topography and the constraints of the site, prevent any scale of development. So, I think your concerns are valid about, wow, what's going to happen with all this density? But I think it will be very challenging for these things to happen, especially over a short period of time. So, I think, as it relates to density, I don't think these things are going to happen overnight. As it relates to parking, what makes downtown so fun and such a great place to visit is the proximity between the different experiences, from the restaurant to the art gallery to the movie theater, your ability to park and walk to these places. And all of that is driven by the efficiency of the use of land. Vista is a bit of an outlier in its regular parking dimensions of nine by 19. City of San Diego's eight by 18. City of Escondido and City of Oceanside are eight and a half by 18. I'd ask you to consider, for the specific plan downtown, private off-street parking for multifamily, the condition being changed to allow the regular stall sizes to be eight by 18, unless that stall is next to a wall or a column, which is what the City of San Diego uses. Then it pushes it out to nine by 18. Thank you.
Very good.
Evening, Commissioners. Just one brief comment, and that is the Vista Magnet, or the Vista Magnet Middle School, which is there now and is designated here as mixed-use, next to open space there where their fields and stuff are. I would encourage you to make that whole entire area open space or parks and rec. And then, you know, 50 years down the line, center of Vista here, we're going to have a nice Central Park next to the Civic Center, connecting to downtown, connecting Wildwood Park, and the whole creek walk that goes to Bringle Terrace Park. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. That is my last speaker slip. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the Commission on the Downtown Specific Plan? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, open it up to discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, Mr. Connolly. Mr. Kaiser's recommendation there, is there potential to do that? Can we recommend that? Because there's been a lot of discussion, because the creek goes underground there. And that would be a great place for recreation.
We, I guess we could include it in your recommendation. It's not something that's part of the action that's before you tonight, so we didn't notice the school district and, you know, the affected property owners. So, I think there's a fairness component that probably needs to be addressed if we really want to make that change. I don't see a problem with you including it in your recommendation, but I don't know that the staff can necessarily amend the plan at the council level following that recommendation. We have to bring it back through a formal amendment process. Another thing to consider is, if you want to make land use changes like that, we can do that, but we should really go through a community-driven process to find what land use changes we want to make before we just say we're going to make this all open space. I don't think that necessarily would be opposed by the community, but there may be other changes that come out of that process, and I'd prefer to take that route than just make a recommendation without the property.
But we could put it as a part of our recommended consideration for the future?
Yes.
Or is that, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to just say thank you to the city and the staff for going through this process, because you guys did a good job of breaking down these individual components of the neighborhoods and giving us parameters to actually look at the areas as they're affected by different heights. And so, I understand that everything we asked for isn't here, and that's part of the process. There's different people and groups involved. I would suggest to my fellow Commissioners that if we feel strongly about the height in a certain zone here, that we expressly and specifically state why and give reasons why we feel that way. For example, we dealt with an issue previously where there was a two- or three-story building going in over a single-story or two-story, and because of the size of the lots, we had concerns over the allowable height of that building encroaching on the neighbor's backyard. And there was generally a gut feeling that this wouldn't be a good feel for the neighborhood with unimproved streets. So, that's a specific example, regardless of that issue coming before us, but that type of situation that we can tell the City Council, this is why we recommend bringing it down to 20 or 25 units per acre in this specific area or in this neighborhood. So, I would just say, as we make recommendations on this issue, let's specifically say why, just so the City Council can make a decision either way and know that we have a basis for what we're asking for in that area. And whatever they decide, they decide, but at least we can make sure we give reasons why we're doing it. So, thanks.
Good. Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Jackal, I'm exactly where you are, and so I would like my fellow Commissioners to think about whoever makes the motion for this Transit District West, to maybe, we had asked for 21 units per acre. Council came back at 40. I'd be happy with 30. I think it's comfortable, but it's such a compact area now that to make it 40, should someone decide to buy up a block, and I'm afraid it would just be way overwhelming in comparing that with the Plymouth area. That has, to me, a larger feel. It feels like the properties are bigger, so I can understand the 40 units because they've got someplace to go. But Camino Patricia and Terracina and Goating, it's very, very tight, and I just think that 40 units per acre is too tight. Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. So, you know, City Council didn't see it quite the way we did in a number of areas, and that's okay. They have their reasons and opinions, but I'm not really treating this like a negotiation here between City Council and Planning Commission, whereas maybe there's a middle ground. I think when we looked at this issue, and I remember the meeting, it was very well-thought-out by the Planning Commission members, very good discussion, specific reasons, like Commissioner Bill mentioned, that we thought out and came to a reason why we thought these certain residential areas should be 21 units per acre, 35 feet maximum height, and they're logical reasons in our minds. And so, I'm perfectly fine with sticking with our original recommendations. I don't see any reason to waver from that if nothing's changed. So, for myself, I'm perfectly fine with our original recommendations, and if the City Council doesn't want to go for it, they won't go for it. That's up to them.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kramer and Commissioner Carroll. I would like to hope my fellow Commissioners could support Commissioner Carroll's recommendation to stick with our original concept. And, I mean, we did think about it and went in the areas and looked. It wasn't just off the top of our head, so I'd really like to try to do that.
I'm tending to agree. When you drive the Camino Patricia neighborhood or street, it seemed like a fairly stable single-family neighborhood, and Commissioner Garretson and Commissioner Bill were talking about the project that was on Valencia and was going up three stories, and we had the people who just bought a house on Camino Patricia and were worried about the height of that unit overlooking their backyard. So, I think that's, Camino Patricia is a
So I, I, I think that's a, Camino Patricia is a pretty stable, single-family neighborhood, and we ought to do what we can to, to protect it. So I'm in agreement about our original recommendation, and so that's my two cents. So, where would you like to go?
Commissioner Jackal?
Well, are we ready for a motion?
I, I think so.
Mr. Conley, tell me how I do this.
Well, you can just make your motion that you want to move for your original recommendations on, from February 6th. Those are all summarized in the staff report.
Okay, then I do move that we stick with our recommendations from the February 6th meeting and ask city council to approve those. And if, if the council needs all of our reasons, we can give them, or we can go back to the discussion from that previous meeting, but they were good reasons.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before seconding the motion, I'd like to ask Mr. Conley and Mr. Stone, is this where we put in a little something, something about the Magnet School and, and open space? Or does that just go with comments to tonight's?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's probably a better comment to make at the end of the meeting, forward to the council as part of the normal planning commission comments, and then we can bring it back if the council directs us to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I second the motion as made by Commissioner Jackal.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve our original recommendations to the council. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes unanimously, so, very good. Do we need a few minutes to switch, switch out? Okay. You want to take Rancho kids now or, or later? Okay. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Rancho students, if you want to come up and have your forms signed. I would encourage you, though, to stay for the next item, because it gets into the specifics of what we were just discussing. So bring your forms up, and the Commissioners sign them.
Did we also approve the smaller spaces?
Yes. Ooh, good question.
Because I don't want to go to eight percent.
Hi. Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. Don't go away.
But we're not regretting it. Well, anybody else?
Person who charged it again. And we're back in session. Commissioners, we just, I need a clarification on the motion. Did it include the, the staff's recommendation for compact spaces, the 25 percent and the size of eight by 16?
Okay, all right. Commissioner Jackal says yes, it did include that, all right? Yes, voice vote or?
I, I just, if everybody nods approval, then staff understands it.
So the staff recommendation was, or the recommendation that we're getting from the Commission was the, the prior February 6 recommendations for the four specific neighborhood areas, but also to include the compact parking and the undergrounding requirement that were part of the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Looney, for clarifying that, so. The next item on our agenda is an early design review. This is not a public hearing, but we will take public testimony. Early design reviews are when an applicant brings his project in, submits it to the city, it has not been reviewed by planning staff or any other staff. It comes to us, we give them our comments on the design of the project, and then they go back and, and make whatever modifications they, they deem fit, come in for their official submittal, and then there'll be a public hearing later on down the line. Our first, our early design tonight is for Terrace Lofts. Ms. Chow, your staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Rassler. Planning Commissioners, I'm Patty Chow, Deputy Director of Community Development Department, City Planner. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present to you the early design review for Terrace Lofts, is project number 18-0296. So the particular preliminary proposal that's before you tonight under this early design review meeting is to develop a total of 42 apartment units on approximately 0.8 acres, gross acre site. The site is located east of South Santa Fe, north of Terrace Drive. It is a partially vacant piece of land, but it's also, also partially occupied by two existing buildings. There is, the proposal is to include one five-story building with the associated site improvements, parking, landscaping, sidewalks, public right-of-way improvements, private balconies, a deck area on the fifth floor, which I'll show to you later in the later slides. So the project allocation that's identified or delineated in red in the center of the slide, it's surrounded by downtown Vista, specific plan, Paseo Santa Fe District, areas that are kind of in this light lavender color. And then further to the east is, you find residential designated areas from R1, single-family residential zones, to RM, which is multifamily residential zones, in yellow and in orange color. The general plan designates the particular subject property as mixed-use, which allows up to 40 dwelling units per acre currently. And the zoning is the downtown Vista specific plan, again, Paseo Santa Fe District. Surrounding, as previously mentioned, there's a medium-low density, a medium-density residential further to the east, and some higher-density residential further to the west, beyond downtown Vista specific plan area in purple. This is the picture of the project site, and you're looking kind of in northeasterly direction from South Santa Fe Avenue. You can see the two existing buildings on the left side of the picture. And this is kind of looking northwesterly at the project site from Terrace Drive, and you can see the above-ground utility lines, the existing site, the changing elevation, the lower and the, the higher portion on the site there. So the project specifics, basically the project, if it were to be formally, when it's formally submitted, would require a special use permit, a site development plan, and a tentative parcel map, again, to address the 42 apartment units in one building, a five-story building. They're proposing 16 studio units, 23 one-bedroom, and three two-bedroom units, at a proposed density of 52 and a half dwelling units per acre. Our general plan currently allows 40 dwelling units per acre max, and so in order to exceed that maximum density, a special use permit would be required. The parking as proposed show 57 spaces provided, where 56 are required, as following the parking ratio requirements in the downtown specific plan. And I wanted to point out that currently, the proposed parking show all of the spaces at eight by 18, and a handicap, the handicap spaces at nine by 18, however, none of which meet the current regular-sized space at nine by 19. And the downtown Vista specific plan, as Mr. Conley covered in his item prior to this particular item, that the, no more than 25 percent of the parking would be allowed to be compact spaces at eight by 16. So they're proposing a, a dimension that is not the regular, and it's not the compact or the 25 percent, so I just wanted to point that out as part of the, what's being proposed. As far as the open space requirements, the required is 8,400 square feet. What it's being shown, based my addition of the square footages in terms of private decks, roof decks, or common landscape areas, it's about close to 7,000 square feet approximately, so still short of what's required as far as open space. The height, it is, there's a maximum allowance for 60 feet, however, if they go above it, or currently on their plans, I believe they're showing meeting the 60-foot, but if it goes above that, then the SUP or special use permit would also be required to exceed the 60. Here's a conceptual site plan, and I delineate it in a blue, kind of a transparent area at the bottom of the site here, which is the building footprint of the second through the fifth floors. And so at the bottom ground, you have the proposed one-story building and the, the parking underneath it. So just wanted to clarify that for discussion purposes. And then you have the lower parking area, obviously the upper parking area, which is gated on the site. The architecture shown here, the four sides, is contemporary architectural style, includes an articulated massing roofline for visual interest. They include an art mural, painted graphics, stucco-finished exterior walls, and a lot of private balconies and decorative guardrails. The design also includes the use of metal awnings, corrugated metal siding, asphalt shingle siding, which is facing South Santa Fe, you can see the darker area in the front, as well as the wood trellis, and they use, they also have a roof deck area on the fifth So just additional renderings showing the top portions is what you're looking, would be looking from South Santa Fe, and then the other elevations looking from Terrace Drive, from the neighbors up on the, upon, behind the project site, I should say. Terms of floor plan, so you have the ground, the first floor, which is comprised of two loft-style units. There's the entry area, obviously, to the building and the parking, as you see it there. And the second, the third, the fourth floor are pretty much emulating each other in terms of the distribution of the two-bedroom units, the, the one-bedroom and the studio units. And when you get to the fifth floor, you have the deck area at that corner, highlighted in red, which it would have been on the lower floors, the two-bedroom units, so that one-bedroom became the roof deck area essentially. But pretty much also that I can tell is, is essentially simulating each other in the same format, in terms of the distribution of the different types of units. So tonight, the staff is requesting that the planning commission provide comments to the applicant related to this design, and as Chairman Rassler indicated, there is no formal voting or action on this item. We're mainly collecting your comments for the benefit of the applicant as they prepare their formal plans. And they also have a presentation that they would like to go over, subsequent to my presentation here tonight. And that pretty much concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need to apologize, I should have stated at the beginning, I did have a meeting with Mr. Gershman.
Okay.
Prior to this meeting, and I'm sorry I didn't mention it.
Any other disclosures? Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, at the last Chamber of Commerce, Government Affairs, they did a brief presentation.
Okay.
And they gave, I don't know whether they recommended it or not, but I abstained, but I did hear the presentation.
All right. Any other disclosures? Okay. Mr. Gershman?
Good evening, Commissioners, staff members of the community. My name is Alava Gershman. I'm the managing partner of Tide Line Partners. Some of our team is here as well tonight. I want to introduce Chris Shonick, who's the head of our development, as well as the architect, Steve Dalton, and Ryan Brem. We're very excited to be here. It's been a two-and-a-half-year process to get to this place. We're really eager to hear your comments. We ultimately want to deliver a project that benefits the community. We'll tell you a little bit about ourselves. We'll talk about the downtown specific plan, which is really what drew us in. We'll talk about the site conditions and the peculiarities that really are constraining what we can and can't do on the site. We'll show you the project, we'll talk about it, and then we'll talk about what really drives us to spend so much energy on this particular project. So a little bit about us. We are a development and investment management company. The development side of our business is impact development, and we're able to do that part of development because our investment management platform provides for regular cash flows. So we manage institutional assets for the likes of GE Capital and other clients, whether they be office parks. And having that side of our business allows us to pursue development that's outside the Our mission in development is simple. We want to leave places better than when we found them. Our values are centered on quality, integrity, and the ability to cultivate community and preserve natural resources. We're located, we were until recently located in downtown Vista, and we have two projects in downtown Vista. One of them is 227 Broadway, and I'm actually wearing a T-shirt from the mural that was done in that project, and I've been saving it for this exact day, so I'm very excited to be finally wearing it. And we work closely with the local art foundations and nonprofits. My history in downtown Vista goes back to the mid-'90s, when I was putting myself through school and working in downtown Vista. So it's kind of a homecoming for me personally, and a great place to finally be able to make an impact in this community. These are the two- These are the two projects that we had completed in downtown. One of them is 150 East Broadway, and that was a shoe cobbler, one-day shoe repair, that Tom Fleming and I shook hands on and made the deal. And while we were working on our permits with the city, we donated the building to the Art Foundation to host events, to raise money for their foundation. That got a lot of attention. The Union Tribune did a couple of articles. We also did 150 East Broadway, where we had a large mural, which also attracted a lot of attention. And we felt our intention was to try to raise the awareness of the unique artists and maker culture that is Vista. It's not just the craft beer. So about the community plan, we're excited about the five different districts that are in the community plan. We love that the plan brings uses together to allow for integration of living, working, and socializing. Particularly, our interest is in the South Santa Fe district, which is envisioned to be the Arts and Culture District. This district calls for contemporary design, building materials such as steel, brick, CMU, and encourages revitalization. Okay, so where's our project located? On South Santa Fe, you know where the roundabout is going to be by Guy Blumberg. So we're right on Phase Two, a major investment which is really making headway for increasing safety, calming traffic, and attracting businesses and pedestrians into the corridor. So the existing conditions, is there a pointer? So, left-hand side over here, this is kind of the current view. The construction started, so some of this has changed a little bit. And on the right-hand side, I don't know if any of you have seen this, this is an artist's visualization of what this area could look like if fulfilled to its density and the desired guidelines, as are spelled out in the specific plan for the area. So these are the current views. Left view is the view towards Civic Center, and this middle slide is looking towards downtown with our great neighbors, 508 Tavern. We're excited to have them next to us, a great amenity for the tenants. And this is kind of an aerial view from the site, looking down towards downtown. You can see Paseo Point just down here, down the street. So this is the site. And as I like to say, right now, it's not banker views. In other words, if you bring your lender to show on the site, it's a little intimidating for them. It's hard to have the vision. But some of the challenges, you can see quite clearly here, from the front of our site to the back, there's about a 35-foot elevation change, which is roughly a two-story building. And as you look across South Santa Fe, this is probably, in terms of just slope change, one of the fastest-rising sites. Obviously, that adds complications and costs when it relates to construction. You'll also notice that we have some above-ground dry utilities, which is power, telephone, and cable, and the requirement is to vary those. And I'll come back to the importance of that a little bit later. There's a bit of an Airbnb happening on this corner up here, a mattress, and then someone is either camping or renting it out. So unfortunately, we'll be displacing a potential hotel of sorts if we do complete the project. Let me tell you a little bit about the specifics of the site as they lay out now. So on the right-hand side, you see the site plan as it is today. We talked about the dry utilities, and they kind of run up terrace and along this easement right here. We have a water main that's also in that yellow area, which we plan to relocate at our cost and hook up our neighbors to the new water line and abandon that 60-year-old water main. And there's also a dedication that we're going to be doing right here and building out a sidewalk, as well as other easements on the front. So the point of showing that is that this is a really unique and challenging site, and it's taken us a really long time to figure out how we can develop on the site. Patsy stole my thunder, because here's the big reveal, a little bit. That's okay. But we're excited about this project, not because we see it as a housing project. Yes, most certainly, it's a housing project. We see this as a spark to ignite what is envisioned to be the Arts and Culture District. You can see this in the material selection, in the contemporary design. Our architect will speak to this in a little bit more detail. You'll also notice the ground floor units down here, and this was a very intentional decision, and it's a challenging one to underwrite and to convince capital partners of. But what we want to do is we want to activate the ground floor. Those are artists' lofts with 12-foot ceiling, large, very large patios that allow eyeballs on the street. And in the future, when the corridor matures, which we strongly believe it will, this allows for the opportunity to repurpose that into a coffee shop, or a little restaurant, or some other community-centric place. This is the site plan that we're proposing. It's about 0.8 of an acre, so by existing zoning, it would allow for 32 units. We're requesting 42 units, and we're fitting within the height envelope of 60 feet. Now, the reason we're having to go to 42 units, and the reason it took two years, is because we had to figure out a way how to absorb 3/4 of a million dollars worth of dry utility relocation in dealing with the slope change on the site. If you look right here, these lines are actually five-foot retaining walls, and then this is another five-foot retaining wall, and then back here, you've got a 10-foot retaining wall. So there's quite a bit of earth that we have to move to accommodate for allowing the adequate amount of parking spaces and fitting in the building. More about the specifics of the project. The unit mix, as Ms. Chow has mentioned, is predominantly studios and one-bedrooms, two artists' lofts on the ground floor, and three two-bedrooms, for a total of 42 units. We're providing 57 parking spaces versus the 56 required. They are, in fact, 8 by 18. They're smaller than the required standard. We've tried everything to fit it in, and 42 was the minimum amount of units that we were able to make the project economically viable. There are a number of amenities that we're really excited about. This will be the first project that'll have a deck at a height of around 45 feet, so you'll have really nice views into downtown for the tenants to enjoy. We have a plan for a large mural. We incorporate art into all of our projects. So we see the wall that's showing this placeholder flower as a great opportunity to collaborate with local artists, and to really have a mural that speaks to the history and the story of Vista, and something that faces into downtown. And over time, I hope, we hope, that this starts to draw people out of downtown and finally into 508 Tavern, and into Partake, who so badly needs customers, especially during the construction period. Another amenity we're really excited about is the maker garage. Our vision is that this project will be occupied by individuals, by creatives, by artists, by makers. So you need a garage to work on stuff. So we're actually incorporating a garage with a roll-up door, a workbench, and a set of tools for the tenants to use. So if they need to assemble their furniture, or if they need to work on their bike, they have a place to do that in the complex. We have bicycle parking, we have EV charging stations. As Ms. Chow mentioned, we are short on our open space requirement, and what I want to point out is our intent, because our intent is displayed in the green space. We're well over the, we're almost fivefold over the required green space. And for example, the balcony sizes are, on average, 100 square feet. Now, this is not a cheap thing to do. Most developers will typically do a four-foot-deep balcony by eight feet at 40, 40 square feet. We truly believe that people, especially in urban contexts, are seeking for an outdoor experience, so creating a large sliding door with a transition to a balcony where you can actually place a table and a chair, so you can have your private outdoor space, is really important to us. You could tell by the building articulation, it's intended to look as not a single mass, but at a cost to us to really kind of convey a creative sense of the structure. And the units will have tall ceilings, modern design, open kitchen plans. I'll turn it over to our architect to tell you a little bit about more the aesthetic of the project.
Good evening, Stephen Dalton, I'm the architect. I wanted to point out, on the left, you'll see kind of a front-on view of the building. The articulation of the massing was really important to us. And so to do that, we have stepped the building back at the upper floors. And so on the left side of the building, you're seeing the black mass. Let's see. In this area, this is where the asphalt shingles are. This is stepping back four to 10 feet at the fourth and fifth floors. And then similarly, over here, above the second floor, we've stepped the mass, or the units back, again, four to 10 feet. This helps us create kind of a more pedestrian, lower-scale, right out at the street level. We've also used this central, this is our stair tower here. This kind of divides the building into two components vertically. The shallower, the narrower lots, more historic development came in 50, 75-foot lot dimensions. And so this is kind of replicating that historic development pattern. You'll see the way we've used the metal siding, not getting my laser, there we go. We've used metal siding around this element here, and again, the way we've used the shingle siding here. These are creating building facades that mimic more a unified building, rather than a more traditional stack of apartments, which you might expect to find. At the very top, we've used this kind of sawtooth roof, and this is kind of harkening back to factory architecture, kind of playing on our kind of maker space narrative, and you're seeing kind of an expressed grid of a structure at the upper floors. Where am I pointing this thing? Okay. At the very top level, as people have alluded, we've got this deck space. We saw that as a way of stepping back from our neighbors that are to the north, that are older developments that will eventually, in the master plan, or in the specific plan, be redeveloped into taller buildings. But in the short term, we've kind of purposely tried to minimize our height right along the south property line over there, or the north property line. You're also seeing the articulation of those offsetting stepped-back deck spaces here, up to 10 feet in the middle there, and four feet in here. And then trellis element that extends down and kind of, again, blurs the line between floor levels. This is giving you kind of a perspective view at the sidewalk level. You'll notice that the building wall kind of flares out, and this becomes kind of an overhead canopy for rain protection as people come to the entry of our building. It also provides us a structure for signage that can be viewed as you walk down the sidewalk. This is kind of an overhead structure for that. You're seeing back in here, the two lower-level lofts. We've got these kind of temporary or removable planters that, as Lev mentioned, if the economics and the vitality of that neighborhood improve, and say, a coffee shop or some other retail component becomes more viable there, then those can be removed, and that space can open up even more to the city, or to the street, sorry. This gives you a perspective from, this would be Terrace Drive off to the right of this drawing, and then against Santa Fe off to the left. You're seeing that the architecture, the materials wrap and extend back, kind of as a four-sided, four-sided architecture. It's not only skin deep at the very front. You're also seeing on the south facing some projected metal shade awnings, and which will, again, enhance the livability of the units inside. This ground floor unit here, we've elevated it here. This is allowing for privacy for those lower tenants, but it's also giving us eyes on the street, again, improving security and a sense of security on the street out in front. With that, I'll return it back to Lev.
Thank you, Steve. So to wrap up, a long journey to get to this point, and really what drives us to be on this journey for as long as we've been is the fact that we see this as an impact project. We believe that if we can deliver a market-rate project in this corridor that's designed, curated, and programmed to attract creatives and individuals, we believe that we can light the spark to help fulfill the vision of the specific plan. Incorporating the character of mercantile into the design, as you saw it here, engaging the local art community to program and activate the project, both in pre-development, as we did with 227 Broadway, as well as, once the project's built, to curate art on the open spaces. That gives us a sense of fulfillment and purpose in delivering this project. Housing is very important. We're short on housing. But what's really more exciting is helping the community reach its vision for the Arts and Culture District. And we'd love to make some noise about it. We'd love to get the paper out here again, and we'd love to let people know that Vista, especially downtown Vista, is a great place to live, to shop, to bring your friends. It's the heart of the city. It's the economic and cultural heart. We would love to hear some of your feedback, and we look forward to working on this project going forward.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant or staff? Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, I just have two questions initially. I have some comments later, but question number one, are you going to prohibit children from living here? And the reason I ask is there are no amenities for children. All these amenities are for adults.
Well, good question. We certainly wouldn't prohibit children from living at this project. We did a comprehensive survey of housing available to tenants around downtown and the periphery. As you know, the Trammell-Crow project, Sky, Trammell-Crow, Avalon, and Fairfield, the three new multifamily projects, they all have playgrounds. There's an abundance of two-bedrooms that carry a higher vacancy. What is significantly undersupplied are studios and one-bedrooms. Certainly would not prohibit children living in the project. We think that there's a need for more efficient, cost-efficient and efficient units.
All right. My second question, what is the elevation of the top of this building compared to the front yards of the people to the east?
Let's go back, let's see. To the east, let's see if we can use a difference line. I don't know if we have that view. So here, this be east, on Facing Terrace?
Well, facing uphill. There are houses up there, correct?
Oh, okay, yes, I think, yes. I think--
So how high are these, will the building be compared to the front yard, the top of this, compared to the front yard of those homes up there?
Yes, good question. Let me show you on this slide here. So you can kind of see where the back of the parcel is, right here with this dotted red line, and roughly at eye level for these folks back here, and it looks like it's kind of in front of the site, but it's really closer towards downtown. You'd probably be at 35, 45 feet. So they would be looking out of their backyard, and they would probably see two floors, or a floor and a half of building, and then sky. So in some ways, that helps us, because we do have a slope, so our neighbors are above us. But in other ways, it makes it very cost-challenging.
I would think it would be a concern for the neighbors back there, too.
Yeah.
How far away would you be from the homes behind there?
Yeah, good question. Let me show you the site plan. So the building is set all the way forward towards the street to engage the street and activate the street. So you have this entire back area, which is-- So, you have this entire back area, which is parking. Right now, it's the Airbnb, as I mentioned, which has a number of empty alcohol bottles and a mattress and so forth. It'll also be well-lit and landscaped. So, we think that the current condition will be significantly improved with this gated, lighted, landscaped lot, and the building will be set towards the street, South Santa Fe, and away from the single-family homes.
But in spite of having the building set with basically zero setback in the front, the rear of the building would be two stories higher than the yards of the people above it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, just looking at the grading plan, the approximate building pad of that home to the east is around 363. The street elevation is around 333, so there's about a 30-foot difference. The building height is at 60 feet, so you're looking at about 30 feet above that pad level of that existing home that's behind the unit.
So, 30 feet, again, how does that relate to the homes behind there? Is it going to be higher than their front yard, and by how much?
It'll be about 30 feet higher than the...
30 feet higher.
It'll be 30 feet higher, thank you for clarifying that, and it'll be about 130 feet away from their front yard.
Then?
Question for staff. Could you please explain how building heights are measured on this particular parcel?
How long do I have? I'm just kidding.
Three minutes.
Oh, boy, okay. Building height is our favorite topic in the planning world. Okay, so, building height, how it goes in our code is that you're measuring from the average natural ground level between the highest and the lowest point on a building site that's covered by a building. So, if you think about where the building is located at, and again, average natural ground level, not finished grade or what's proposed at the end of the day, the highest, the lowest point, the midpoint, that midpoint, you measure it all the way to the top of the building, the highest appurtenance, and that cannot exceed 60 feet vertical height. It excludes, like, stuff like solar energy equipment, things like that, but that's the basic understanding of building height.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up while we're there? So, it's just the building footprint, the average height of the building footprint, not the, not the average height of the entire lot?
Not, it's what's covered by the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Another question. In your presentation, were the number of units proposed 52 or 42? Because I thought on the presentation, it was 52.
52 is the density. So, 52.5 is the density per acre, so 42 is what they're proposing at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for Ms. Chow, want clarification, please? So, the front and side setbacks are zero. So, I'm assuming that we have the street, we've got the sidewalks, sidewalk and boom, that's where building goes?
That's correct.
So, the trees and shrubberies that are shown in the presentation, in the applicant's presentation, those are, those are the street trees that are on city property?
Yes, the trees are planned as part of the public improvements already. Those are the street trees that the city's capital improvement project. I will point out that our building in this area is set back about five feet from the sidewalk, so these shrubs are in a planter between our building and the sidewalk.
Okay, so the front setback where it says zero is actually five feet?
Right. Looking for that site plan. If you look right here, I think we need new batteries. Here we go. On the left, on the left side of our building, if you look at the ground, there we go, this is a planter right here. And then, the building does come out to about two feet off the sidewalk here, and then there's patios and walkway to get to the ground-floor units over here. These patios here, I believe, are six feet deep.
I'm sorry, those patios are what?
Six feet deep.
Thank you. I heard, Mr. Gresham, you made a comment about a stair tower. So, is it stairs up five feet or elevator?
We have both, an elevator and a stair.
Okay. Question for staff. Ms. Chow, what is the architectural vision for Paseo?
So, in the downtown Vista specific plan, it talks about, a lot about introducing industrial materials, components, storefronts, metal, aluminum, brick, so pretty much trying to introduce that. That's a perfect slide, kind of showing what it's envisioned for that area.
Okay. Are there any other? My concern is, when I look at Paseo Point, and then I look at your project, both of them are beautiful, but do we have other visions, other projects that may be coming before us that are going to be a combination to bring it all together, or?
Hopefully so, in the near future. There may be another EDR that may speak to that, but I think that's why we're here, you know, looking at these proposals that hopefully will trigger that, that discussion, and the very well-use of what's being thought of and what was envisioned in the downtown specific plan.
Okay. Question for the applicant again. So, your building is set basically in the front, right on Santa Fe, so all the parking is in the back. Why wasn't it centered, or a little bit of parking in the front, or was that because of the height that you don't want to encroach on the people behind you?
Really, just looking at the specific plan and kind of good urban policy for a pedestrian experience. We don't want cars out on the sidewalk, where when you walk the sidewalk, you're walking behind cars, or you're seeing all the cars.
Okay.
So, we really envisioned storefront and, you know, human-occupied spaces primarily over the automobile.
Okay, that makes sense. And you were going, trying to market value and not low income, or?
They're all market rate.
Market value, okay. I think that's all the questions I have for right now. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Bell?
Thank you. You talked a little bit about the market feasibility of the building, and you don't have to go into specific numbers, but if you were to reduce this by a story and 10% or 15% of the units, is this project feasible at all? And if you were to dig out underground parking, is that a cost that would just destroy the project at this point, or make it unfeasible?
Unfortunately, the answer is yes. That would make it unfeasible. There are also challenges with the site in terms of where the building is located and the easements, but to give you an idea, 42 was the magic number for us after a lot of exercises of how to solve this, and ultimately, understanding that we had to bury the dry utilities. We proposed a number of different solutions to staff, and ultimately, it was, hey, you got to take care of the dry utilities. So, 42 is a number that allowed us to park the project, so we have 57 versus the 56 required, and it allowed us to basically get a yield on cost of the project that's marginally acceptable to a lender.
Right.
It still is very much a hard sell for us, and really selling the vision of what the future is, but 42 was the bare-bones minimum for us to pull it off.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. You had mentioned there was going to be a couple, there was a dedicated square footage that could be future retail. Okay, would those ADA access ramps be put between your building and the property line on that particular corner? Because right now, what is shown in plan and in elevation are all steps. So, would there be any accommodation made in phase, during the first initial construction to accommodate ADA, right?
That's an important port that we'd have to resolve, or solve for. I think what we would do is try to bring those ramps off of the terrace side, which are, it's a higher elevation than the Santa Fe sidewalk. So, we'd start high at that end and try to minimize the amount of ramp that came over to the retail.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
I'll add, those spaces are accessible from the rear. There's a, the ADA parking is in the back, and there's an accessible ramp down to those two units.
That might be kind of an awkward way, if it's storefront, for customers to come in the backside.
If you turn it into storefronts, a long time ago, when I was doing this, it used to be that the ceiling between the ground-floor unit and the first story of residential was considered a property line, and you had to do fire protection. Are you going to build that in when you, during your construction?
Correct. We'll be using a concrete podium, or achieving that three-hour separation.
Okay. And what about ventilation if a small coffee shop goes in, or a restaurant?
Right, we typically provide for a shaft that can be filled in the future, should they have a vent hood or something like that.
Okay. Who are your clients going to be? Who do you think you'll rent to?
The community, we imagine, will be comprised of individuals that are looking for a unique place to go home. They could be young people coming out of college that are looking to have a place of their own instead of a roommate. We think it could be young families that maybe have kids in the two bedrooms, maybe they don't have kids. We also think empty-nester, folks that have raised a family and don't want to take care of a big yard, and want to live in a downtown with proximity to a theater and proximity to restaurants, would live there.
Okay. All right. I had a question of Commissioner Looney. He's an architect, so I wanted to get his perspective on what he thought of asphalt shingles as a siding material. Have you seen that done before, or is that unique, or cutting-edge, or something silly?
Asphalt shingles typically are not installed on a completely vertical surface.
Right.
Typically, it's on a slope.
Right.
I'd really have to go to the manufacturer to see if those would be, actually, you'd probably use it as a, strictly as a facade, rather than a concrete panel or a plastic panel, because it's not really used for waterproof.
Right.
It's just decorative.
It's just decorative. And is that a, is that a good thing, or?
It'll last for 30, 25, 30 years, and then you'll see the fiberglass starting to come through it, because it is an oil-based product, and it will break down in the ultraviolet.
What I like about it as well is that it will provide a fine-grained texture to that wall, more so than what stucco might, right? So, in a same way that makes...
Get more texture?
Right.
You have aluminum panels that have the same kind of coating on it that an asphalt shingle does, and that's, I mean, there's other alternatives, but I've seen that done, too.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We do have a couple of public speakers. Tom Fleming?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Tom Fleming. I live at 809 Grapevine in Vista. I've been a resident of the downtown for a number of years. Mr. Gresham's company bought my property at 227 East Broadway. The one thing you've noted, you'll notice about any of his projects are they're community-centered, they're community-focused. He bought the property there, I believe it was 150, did a great mural on the outside, did something with the building. He bought my building, basically leveled it, because it was old as the hills and wasn't worth anything, and he's built a really nice place there, and it's going to have a nice outdoor beer garden there. It'd be really nice. The one thing I think about this, or actually, there's a couple of things. The first thing that comes to mind is I am upset with all the traffic and all the destruction of the roads and all this kind of stuff, but that's growing pains. You've got to go through that. I hear that all the time about, you know, how messy it is and how bad it is, but you've got to go through that to get to where you want to go. So, that said, I like the project because it focuses on what we talked about. When we first started talking about this with Ms. Chow and the Commissioners and all this, when we were sitting down and looking at what, Mercantile Street, what we wanted to do to South Santa Fe, we wanted an art district there, and this is what this is. Everything he's got there focuses on that. If you look at those two apartments on the very, lofts on the bottom with the, with the big patios, I heard it said once that, not necessarily a coffee shop, but that could be somebody that does jewelry, makes jewelry, and they could set a little patio, own their patio, and have it almost their outside thing. I like the idea of that, those two places there versus commercial buildings like down, down across from Danny's Donuts, that have got nothing in them. It makes a whole lot more sense to have apartments that can do something with, people live there, versus blank, built blank facades there. So, all in all, I think it's a good project. I think when you, the people up behind, when they look out, if you, well, if you look at their places, a lot of them don't sit out on their back, as you can tell by their houses, they don't have a lot of out their back door looking at something pretty. If they did, they would see, as he talked about, the mattresses, the beer bottles, all this kind of stuff. What they're going to see now is they're going to see a nice parking lot with some clean-up, lit area. They're going to look at the tops of the buildings, granted, but that, to me, is a whole lot better than what they've got. All in all, I think it's a project that can be worked with. I think you all are going to probably come up with some suggestions that they might can take and make it a better project. So, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Mr. Kaiser?
Good evening, and Commissioners. Paseo-Santa Fe is looking better. Thanks partially to you guys and the City Council, and your contributions, and the plans that have developed so far. This is another step along the way, as well as the Phase 2 of the road improvements and undergrounding the utilities. And if you want to know the definition of blight, there's a picture of this piece of property in the dictionary, right? We really need to do something for this place and for the other ones down there in South Santa Fe. So, I encourage you to continue contributing, and of course, your due diligence on all these improvements and stuff like that, but I'm very much in support of this. I like how creative it is. I like that he had to, how he, how he was creative in the sense of adding the units and adding the parking, and still being able to show a return on investment. I know that's a tough thing to do on that small property and all the other challenges there. So, again, I encourage you to move forward, and I really like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. That's the last speaker slip I have on the, that's been turned in. Is there anyone else wishing to address the Commission on the project? If not, I will turn it over to the Commission. We usually go into our comment period, and our first category is site design and grading, and I would think, based on our other, our other categories here, that density would be included in that. So, any comments on the project's site design, grading, or its density?
Commissioner Garretson?
Question for Ms. Chow. The zoning for this calls for 40 dwelling units. The proposal is 58. How many dwelling units could a developer propose and still come to early design review? What if they came with a design for 80 units?
So...
Would it still come to early design review with the Planning Commission?
Certainly, the early design review is, it is just a discussion. There is really no action to be taken on the item, so if they are to exceed the density, that's allowed, that's part of the discussion.
When this project was presented, I really liked many, many, many things about it, until I got my package that showed how out of compliance it is. And, you know, that concerns me more than anything. What about the project next door, and the one next door? I mean, how many, you know, 58 dwelling units?
I mean, how many, you know, fifty-eight dwelling units per acre are we going to have along there when the, when it's allowed only forty? That's my comment.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the, the density is a tough sell for me. You know, we've just, we've just seen a grand plan here for, you know, that we've, it's been painstakingly set out for, for the downtown area at forty units per acre, and then to just, you know, project by project, as they come up and as they need to be increased to be financially feasible, to just, to just throw that out the window is really a tough sell for me. I mean, that's the purpose of the general plan. That's the purpose of these, of these guidelines, is to hold to the guidelines, because they've been thought out as part of a full plan for the city. So, it is a slippery slope for me, and the parking, you know, is a tough sell for me as well, the smaller spaces.
Comes later.
Okay, that's not part of site design?
No. Well, we, our category of parking and traffic is...
Okay. So, as far as just, as far as the building layout up front and the park in the back, that's great. That works well, and it's just the density.
Commissioner Jackal?
I really like everything about this project. I like the way it looks. I like where it is. I like what it's proposing to be and do, but I am concerned about the density.
Okay. Commissioner Bill?
When this comes back around, I would be curious to hear from the applicant or the city as to what the, what the balance of the density is compared to another building that has forty-two units, because I think we are seeing a lot of buildings that have two and three bedrooms at forty-two units, and here we're looking at mostly studios and one bedrooms. And so, I don't think it's, I think it's a little bit of apples and oranges to say that density, just by its pure ratio, is off, but I don't know that for sure. And so, I don't think it's a question anyone can answer tonight, but i-if the applicant can get us more information when you come back around, I think it would be valuable for the community to also hear whether forty-two units of two- and three-bedroom-sized apartments is the same as the studios and one bedrooms that we're looking at here, density-wise, on that, so. But because I, again, I mirror other comments, that I love everything about this for the most part. I think the density is concerned, because we have to gatekeep a little bit and make sure we don't open the floodgates to a lot more changes outside the standards we've set.
Commissioner Looney?
Thank you. Yeah, regarding the site design, it's a tough lot, but I like the way that you've raised a portion of the parking area, where we're really being able to see underneath that second level. It gives that building some transparency. Having the ground floor basically anchor the corner, I think, works well. As brought up earlier, density, I think that's an issue. But again, the site layout, the site design, I think it works. So, that's it.
I, I tend to agree. The site, the site layout, where the buildings are placed up on the street front to create a street, uh, street frontage for South Santa Fe is a good thing. Stepping up the parking in the back with the retaining walls, I'm, I'm fine with that, but the density, for me, is a bridge too far. And if you're, in, in my mind, it's outside our preview, purview, to talk about return on investment, but I think you're going to have to provide us with some fairly solid justifications about why you need this many units. And I don't know that it comes to public hearing. Maybe you give it to staff, and staff reviews it, and they tell us if they, if they agree with you or not. I, you know, that's, that's private business, and, and maybe outside the Commission's responsibility. But for me, if you took the top floor off, the fifth floor, and turned it into common usable open space, and you would be at thirty-two units, you would take down that, that thirty feet that the neighbors are going to see by ten feet, I, I might be able to support that. So, that is, for me, a major concern. So, all right, Commissioners, why don't we move on to architecture? Any comments on the architecture? Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the architecture and the way it's designed. Since you've got neighbors behind you, and will at some point have neighbors on each side, as beautiful as the front is, continue it around so that the beauty is for everyone. And the daisy is, is attractive. It's different. It's attractive. And since you're trying to get the art community involved, maybe the Art Commission can help with design, whatever goes on that building, but, very nice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jackal?
Well, as I've already said, I, I really love the architecture. I think it's, it's very imaginative, and is not going to be imposing just this big block of something on the community. I, I really like it.
Very good. Commissioner Garretson?
Ditto the last two comments.
Commissioner Looney?
A little different take on that. I think, let's go look at the front decks that are common to South Santa Fe. It was mentioned that you've got decks that are up to ten feet from the front of the facade, but really, you've got about four or five feet of deck. Then you have a structure over in this area, where the deck extends behind that front facade wall. So, you may have ten feet of deck, but it still gives the illusion of that offset, of that building offset only being four to five feet. So, I'd like to see more offset on the street. The same applies to Terrace Drive. We basically have a sixty-foot wall that goes from street level to the roof parapet. I think what you've done on the north side to offset some of the massing, if some of that could be done on the front corner, could we, Patsy, could you go to the east elevation, please?
One more.
If we could take a portion of this corner and begin to soften it, rather than having two sixty-foot towers, I think that'll help the streetscape significantly. And that was really all that I had for the architecture.
Okay. I tend to agree with Commissioner Looney on the, on the Terrace Drive elevation, and on the east elevation, which we're seeing on the, on the far right, got basically two colors there, white and gray. I would think that you would want to introduce at least a third color in that, on that elevation. So, that's my comment. Parking and traffic, Commissioners. Comments on parking and traffic? Commissioner Kramer?
You're going to have to make it work that you fulfill the requirements in the, that we just adopted, or with City Council, with the larger spaces and twenty-five percent being, could be up to twenty-five percent with the compact, but you've got to comply. That, that's, it's going to be a must. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Along the same lines, that parking space width really needs to be maintained. If you've got a vehicle that averages six and a half feet in width, and if you go to an eight-foot wide parking stall, you've got a few inches to squeeze between the open door, or you hit the door of the other car. So I'd like to keep that parking space standard the way that is.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, yeah, I'll just echo what was said about the parking. I'm not on board with the reduced size, the reduced width or length of those parking stalls from a standard size, and I just, I just, I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate.
Parking has been a major issue at the Planning Commission over the last four or five years, so I don't think you're getting a sympathetic, sympathetic reception here, because it is a problem for us, and it's an ongoing problem for the city. So you, I think, I think there's a tipping point someplace. You're too far right now, but a reduction in units, increase in the size of the space, elimination of a number of units in reduction, relationship to the reduction in density, there's a, there's a balancing point there that, that can be reached. I think you should take advantage of the change that we are recommending to the Council tonight for the compact spaces. That, that may help you. Like the driveway location, I like the layout of the parking, it's just the width. We have an awful lot of young men in this town that drive big trucks, and they need all nine feet of our parking space. My doctor is down at Scripps in San Diego. I hate parking in their garages, because the spaces are so narrow. So, that's a standard that the city has set for the benefit of our citizens, and you, you need to make, meet it. Okay. Commissioners, landscape and amenities. Commissioner Garretson?
I would just reiterate what I said before, is that there's nothing there for kids, and there's nothing else around for kids. There's nothing close by. You know, you have to go quite a ways. There's no playground, there's, it's, all the amenities and the whole thing is set up for adults.
Commissioner Bill?
Having a two-year-old, I completely understand that, more so than I did two years ago when I came on here, and didn't understand that at all. Having said that, I think, I commend you for having different kinds of amenities, and I think you can work on those, but I think for this type of project and the location you're trying to build here, I, I like what you've come up with. I like, I think, I, I see the market appeal, I think. I don't have any background understanding at all what's in demand out there, but if you're selling studios and one-unit, one-bedroom rentals to people who want to live in a smaller space and be mobile, then having a space to build, tinker, fix, repair onsite as part of a theme of art and making is huge. So, I, I think it's a good idea from my perspective.
Your amenities, I like, I like the concept behind it. Your, your amenity where you're going to have the workshop. I'm a, I'm a woodworker. Commissioner Looney can attest that my workshop is fourteen by twenty-two, and I have it full. So I, my sense is that your space is kind of small, and if you want to call it amenity, I think it has to be, it has to be larger, and it has to show us how it's going to work. So, the other amenities, the, the only other amenity that you have is that deck on the fifth floor, and like I said before, I think that needs to be larger. It should have outdoor seating, it may be a pot fire pit. I don't know if you can get a spa up there or not structurally, but you need to do more than what you presented to us. And you need to have a landscaping plan. That was one thing that wasn't included in the, in the package, so we don't know how you're going to landscape it, so we can't give you comments on what we think of your, of your landscaping. So, that will remain kind of an open question until you, till you come back. Any other comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. I would, I would suggest that, coming back, you might have some cross-sections that show the building, the tiered parking, and the off-site neighborhoods to the east and south terrace and the other side, opposite of Santa Fe. That really helps, that type of scaled cross-section is really helpful for putting a perspective, putting into perspective the, the building as it relates to the neighborhood.
That's an excellent suggestion, cross-sections through the property. Commissioner Looney?
It was the same thing. Provide a couple of cross-sections through the site, through that adjacent properties up on the, on the east, and also take it across maybe this, to the street on the west side, to where we can begin to anticipate building heights that have yet to be developed. But the cross-sections are just very important.
Commissioner Garretson?
I would just reiterate what they have already said.
Okay. Very good. You've heard a lot of comments here tonight. Any questions of us about what you've heard from us? Nope? Yeah, thank you. Student Commissioners, any thoughts from, from you folks? Gil?
I just had a comment that I drive a rather large car, and I understand that there's times where I'm parked perfectly straight and I'm on the line on both sides. So I think that the parking is an issue.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioners? All right. That concludes our early design discussion tonight, so thank you all for coming, and we will, the next item on our agenda is reports from, and comments from Commission members. Commissioner Garrison, I think, yeah, you want to make a comment here?
About what?
The school? The middle school?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I, I would like to see something, at least in the long-term plans, our master plan calls for so many acres per thousand population. And hopefully, the City Council and the city staff are making plans now for expanding or increasing public parks and recreation, and that would be a perfect place for it, since more population is going down there. So if there's something we can do to influence that, to make that at least available long-term for such a use.
Commissioner Jackal?
Mr. Colley, several meetings ago, when we were hearing about the Climate Action Plan, we asked if we could have a presentation on the community choice thing. And I don't know if I missed it, the one...
So we have not provided any more information on that, pending the Council's review of the issue. We did go before the City Council at the end of last month to present the Climate Action Plan. They did not indicate a lot of support for community choice energy at this point. They want us to further evaluate what we can do to get to our goal without having to commit to that, and if we cannot get there, then we'll come back and revisit the issue, and if they want to further evaluate it, then we'll bring a presentation. If the Council asks for a presentation, we'll certainly bring the same exact presentation to the Commission, but we haven't been directed to do that yet.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Looney?
Couple of things. What's the policy for establishing no parking zones on streets? For example, the corner of Phillips and Mar Vista, near the Arco Station, they're building that bicycle path that's parallel to the tracks. They are also, from what I understand, going to be installing a signal for the cyclist to cross Mar Vista. But what's happening right now, even before the development is occupied and built out on Santa Fe, there's people parking up on Phillips on, on that narrow side, on the, I guess it would be the, the north side, and it creates a choke point for people coming from the freeway and turning left onto Phillips. Is there any traffic studies that are going to be done that...
So, those types of requests go through our Traffic Engineering Department, and... So, those types of requests go through our Traffic Engineering Department, and they are evaluated for a need for parking control. And if the traffic engineer recommends that we implement no parking, then it goes to the City Council for final approval. So, I can submit your request to our traffic engineer and have them look at it.
Okay. Thank you. That was all.
Mr. Conley, East Vista Way is going to be closed tomorrow for five, 10 minutes?
Yes, there is some blasting that's going to occur at the corner of Foothill and East Vista Way on the construction site that's going to require a closure for about a five-minute period.
And is it where the emergency access comes down onto East Vista Way?
I believe it's more up on the slope, but they want to have the road clear in case there's any debris. They makes it down to the road.
Where do you think would be the best point to view that?
If you wanted to see it, you could probably go over to the North Gate Market, I'm thinking, or maybe, you know, the gas station across the street. Probably be able to see it.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Commissioner Garretson?
Yes, Mr. Conley, what is the update on the bicycle trail in terms of when it's anticipated to be open to Mar Vista and when it's anticipated, we're now working on it that would go down to the transit center, correct?
The portion that's under construction right now ends at Mar Vista, and then it picks up again all the way up at North Avenue and goes out to Melrose. So, there's two simultaneous pieces being constructed, and then there'll be a gap in the middle, which is the most expensive part, of course, because it requires a lot of retaining walls. There's topography there. That part's unfunded. Sandag has applied for a grant in the last round of ATP grant funding to fund that. We expect that is going to be looked upon favorably, so we're hoping that construction could start next year. The completion of the total project is probably 2022, at the way things are going. The Mar Vista piece should be done probably summertime next year.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
One question regarding the parks that have come up. It's good, I think it's good planning to have parks. What does the city do for security? For example, the park located at Civic Center and Vista Way, it's, that park's been there for decades, but there's also a large amount of transits and needles that are on that site frequently. So, does the city have any type of enforcement program or cleanup program?
Yeah, this has been a problem citywide in all of our public spaces, both publicly and non-publicly accessible, as I'm sure you can see. The Sheriff's Department primarily takes care of enforcement. Our Public Works Department has been looking at all of the public spaces for improvements to fencing and lighting and any kind of landscape, you know, maintenance that could improve vision. We've, you know, picked trees up along the creek, and we've tried to trim back landscaping around Creek Walk and put in new lighting. We put in new lighting at Wildwood. We've increased sheriff patrols. When we've had a lot of homeless, primarily because of the construction activity moving around, we've had focused patrols. Those come and go. When we're notified, we try to schedule them and, you know, send them out within a few days. So, Wildwood's been a frequently patrolled area. It has been an area that's gotten a higher attention. And lighting and, you know, security from the sheriffs is about, at this point, all we've done, we can do.
Okay. Well, that's good to know, because I, I think the parks are a good asset to have in our cities, but if they're not safe, they're not going to be used.
I think one of the things that I've seen proposed is that we would either add a sheriff or a park ranger, or maybe two park rangers, and part of their responsibility would be to patrol parks.
It's like it's going to be a sheriff, officer, deputy that will be added. Let's come on back to Council.
Is it? Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Conley?
So, I have a couple of updates. We will have a meeting on September 18th. We'll revisit the Classic Chariot's auto dealership garage, and we'll have a project on North Melrose. The storage facility there is doing an addition. So, we have two public hearings. There's a lot of construction activity going on, I know you've all noticed. As far as some of the public projects, we expect the work on the East Vista Way medians to be done by the end of this month, so hopefully that traffic control will go away and the street will open up again to regular traffic. The Paseo Santa Fe Traffic Control is having some closures, some short-term, one-directional closures that are occurring right now, so you may hear about that. The city is scheduling demolition of the buildings around the Roundabout at Kwahomi, so the two old auto repair buildings that are on the east side, and a number of the retail buildings that are on the west side are all going to be demolished. That work should start around the third week of September. So, you will see some fire department training and other sheriff's department training in those buildings before they demolish them. You'll see that work hopefully by the end of the month. And then finally, the Roundabout at Mar Vista and Avocados in its final design stage. We have issued a grading permit for the project at Mar Vista and South Santa Fe, and they're responsible for building that, so that should start hopefully in the next couple of months. That's all I have.
Very good. Any other questions for staff? All right. Very good. That will conclude our meeting. We stand adjourned until September 18th.